Good evening, I'd like to welcome you all to the Ferndale City Council meeting for Monday, April 27, 2015. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I would pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry about that. Marty, will you please call the roll?
Councilmembers Lennon, Pollocka, Tiana, Mayor Proton Martin, and Mayor Coulter.
Mayor Coulter has an urgent family obligation to attend to this evening, so he will not be here tonight. Next agenda item is approval of the agenda.
I make a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Support.
Proposed by Pollocka, supported by Tiana, I do have one change to make. The Downtown Development Authority will not be here under presentations, but I see our county commissioner's here, so we'll give Alaina a chance to come up and speak, and it will be Presentation 4D.
That was so early, lucky.
Thank you.
No, no, we're just changing the agenda.
First of all, what, oh.
Hang on two seconds.
Oh, good.
And three presentations.
Calling me up right now.
No, I wasn't calling you up.
All the better.
We're just changing the agenda, sorry. All right, Marty, will you call the roll?
Councilmembers Pollocka, Tiana, Lennon, and Mayor Proton Martin.
Yes. Next are the presentations, and we have a Police Department Citizen Award and Unit Commendations. Chief? I promise this will get smoother.
Hey, Your Honor. Good evening, everyone. This evening, we have a kind of a bifurcated set of awards that we'd like to give. First, we'd like to call up Mr. Homer Walker, who's in the audience here, and I'd like to tell you a little bit about an incident that occurred earlier this month. Mr. Walker, if you'd step up, please. On April 3rd of this year, at about 1:30 in the afternoon, a elderly woman was walking eastbound on East Breckenridge near Bermuda. As she was walking, a subject came up to her, grabbed her from behind, and pushed her up next to a building. The suspect attempted to rip her purse from her grasp, but she refused and fought back. At this point, the suspect pointed a gun in her face and struck her several times in the abdomen. Mr. Walker here was driving by in Bermuda and saw what he describes as a man fighting with a woman. Mr. Walker stopped his truck and yelled at the man to stop. This resulted in the suspect stopping and fleeing the scene on foot. Mr. Walker then went to the aid of the victim and brought her directly to the Ferndale Police Department. Mr. Walker and the victim were able to provide the police at the dispatch area with timely and accurate information that ultimately resulted in the violator perpetrator being captured. Without his quick and selfless action, Mr. Walker, the victim might have been seriously injured or possibly killed. In response, Mr. Walker went to the aid of a fellow citizen who had just been robbed while walking down the street. It was a selfless act that was instrumental in taking a career criminal who was on parole off the streets of Ferndale. So on behalf of the Ferndale Police Department, we would like to award you our Citizens Award. Okay, now for part two of that same incident, I'd like to call up Sergeant Brown, Officer Heath, Officer Lemke, Officer Bodendorfer, and Sergeant Reed from the Pleasant Ridge Police Department. Sergeant Brown, or I'm sorry, Sergeant Simon and Officer Colette couldn't be here tonight, but they are also receiving an award that we'll get to them at a later time. As you may guess, this is in relationship to the capture of that individual that Mr. Walker had pointed out and stopped the assault. Again, on the 3rd of April, Mr. Walker and the victim rushed into the police station lobby. They were excited and out of breath. The victim stated she was just robbed by a man in the area of Breckenridge in Bermuda. Mr. Walker confirmed the incident, said that the individual was a black male, six-foot tall, muscular, wearing all black, and had a gun. Ferndale cars were dispatched to the area to investigate this armed robbery. Officer Lemke quickly located a witness who confirmed the incident occurred, and relayed that information to all the cars with the last known direction and confirmed the suspect's description. Officer Heath, Officer Colette, Sergeant Simon, and Officer Lemke checked the area. Sergeant Brown started to coordinate the cars for a perimeter to contain the escape of the suspect. Officer Heath and Sergeant Simon were set up along the west side of the perimeter on Woodward Avenue. Officer Heath observed a person who matched the description pop out between New York Bagel and the Ferndale Radiator Shop. As he approached this suspect and exited his vehicle, the suspect put his hand up in the air and then ran northbound, and northbound, and then across Woodward Avenue. The suspect discarded a cellphone when he saw Sergeant Simon approaching from the north. The suspect ran west across Woodward Avenue with Officer Heath and Sergeant Simon in foot pursuit, also at the same time radio to the car's location of their pursuit. Officer Heath observed the suspect throw his weapon onto the roof of the French Cormet Restaurant and then run into the backyards on West Woodland. Sergeant Simon, Officer Heath, Sergeant Brown, Officer Bodendorfer, first day on the job, and Sergeant Reed, and Officer Lemke and Officer Colette quickly collapsed to the perimeter in the backyards in the 200 block of West Woodland, leaving the suspect with little or no place to escape. He was arrested shortly thereafter without further instance, and all the evidence was recovered in the crime. For that, each officer is awarded the department's unit commendation.
Our next presentation is from the Ferndale Public Schools. Is someone here from the school district?
Hello. Good evening, Council. My name is Raylon Leaks May. I'm with the Ferndale Schools Board of Education, and I have a couple of announcements that are things that are going on in schools. First, I'd like to congratulate University High School, which is one of the 20 schools to be awarded the Education of Excellence Award from the Michigan Association of School Boards. The goal of that program included providing urban students with immersion experiences on a university campus and to better prepare them for challenges and expectations for university life. Next, I'd like to announce that the Ferndale Education Foundation is having a four-kids golf classic. This will benefit teachers and students of Ferndale Public Schools, and that's going to occur on Saturday, June 20, 8:00 a.m. at the Sanctuary Lake Golf Course in Troy. Early registration tickets are $100 per golfer and include a continental breakfast, golfing with a cart, a hot dog at the turn, whatever that is, and dinner and awards back at Ferndale at the restaurant called The Bosco. Tickets purchased after May 31st are $125 per golfer, and dinner-only tickets are available for $30. An additional thing going on at Ferndale. A mom-to-mom sale will be going on on May 9th from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. at Roosevelt Elementary, and that also benefits Ferndale Schools. We have a Ferndale student that has won the Gates Millennium Scholarship. Tommy Martin was awarded this prestigious Gates Millennium Scholarship from Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. This prestigious scholarship is awarded to 1,000 students annually and gives them the opportunity to earn a bachelor's, master's, or even a PhD free of charge. We also have another award. University High School alumni has won the Research Award at Howard University. Tiffany E. Brockton, class of 2011, she has won an award for most outstanding presentation in the area of ethics, law, and religion in the undergraduate student category. Tiffany's abstract is called "Fulfilling the Great Commission in the Africana Way" and will be published in the El Selvier, sorry, press. Ferndale High School hits a grandstand with Comerica Bank. Last week, Ferndale High School baseball and softball programs were named one of the top five Michigan high schools to win the Comerica Grand Slam Grant. This is the fifth year that that grant has occurred. Awards will be used for field improvements, equipment, training camps, and other baseball or softball-related expenses. Lastly, the Ferndale Schools' Fine Arts Boosters is launching their sixth annual Flower Day Sale. That will occur on, the orders are due for that tomorrow, April 28. You can reach out to Paula Cardelli, (248) 635-2354, or Irony Together, (248) 398-6030. And what that fundraiser will help with is that it includes concert dress, uniform, equipment needs, and programs for art, dance, orchestra, choir bands, drumline, and our state champion marching band. And I just wanted to also just put a plug out there that we had a wonderful talent show this weekend at JFK, and I just thank you all for supporting Ferndale Schools and just, I hope you're excited as I am that the wonderful things are happening here. Thank you.
Thank you, Raylon. The next is a presentation from the Ferndale Area District Library. Is anyone here from the library?
I do not see anybody there.
Okay. With that, now we'll move on to our county commissioner, Elaine Zach.
First, I'd like to tell you about Youth and Government Day today. So every year, we invite students throughout the county to come to see Oakland County Board of Commissioners and Government in operation, and we had delightful students from Ferndale Schools come. And I was so impressed with this group of students. You know, part of what they do is they're introduced to county government, elected officials. The afternoon, they saw a panel of judges where they get to ask questions. They saw road commission equipment. They watched the General Government Committee in action. They had questions and answers. And just some of the quality of the questions, I was so proud that one of the Ferndale students was asking all these wonderful questions, and Crystal was there to witness this. And I was just very impressed with their engagement, their commitment. Several of the students, they were all juniors in Mr. Wayland's classes, either civics or economics, and their focus, one wants to be a civil engineer, another one wants to be a psychiatrist, another one wants to be a lawyer, another one's going to enlist. They were really very talented, engaged, young people, and I was very impressed, and thank you Ferndale Schools for allowing them to come. I do want to remind people once again that we do have the Oakland County One-Stop Shop here, but we also, in Pontiac, on Thursdays, they have open hours for any potential business entrepreneur. You can just drop in, talk to a business consultant without scheduling an appointment. You know, I know that sometimes people fail or they don't do it, but it's nice to know that you can drop in. And this is at 1200 North Telegraph, the Executive Office Building, which is across the street from Oakland Schools. And you can go in there and get a whole wide array of consultation as well as materials, but I know that we also have those here. There's been a lot of discussion about the vaccination policy in Oakland County, and I think I talked about it before, but I do want to reiterate that the state changed the policy on vaccinations. And what the state, you used to be able to take your child to your doctor and get a waiver form from the doctor, and the legislation was changed where now families have to go to the county. You know, parents will have to go to the county, participate in a 30-minute education session, and they're required to bring their student, their child with them. And from the standpoint, what they've found across the country is that there's a lot of misinformation on vaccinations. And by going through a proper training, some, you know, with, you know, CDC information, sometimes parents decide to vaccinate their children, change their minds with the proper education. We heard from, I don't know, probably about a half a dozen pediatricians last week, other health experts supporting the policy, but there are also parents out there that are disgruntled about it. But I personally think that my role as Commissioner is to promote public health. Vaccinations do protect the safety of our community, and if people do choose to opt out individually, at least they will opt out with proper education. But we've heard from a lot of different people. There is in process going on an off-road vehicle county park. If you drive Jeeps, off-road vehicles, we are looking at doing something in North County in conjunction with the State of Michigan. There's a whole proposal out there. I'm told it's about a year or two away. For those that like this type of recreation, the closest place to go is Flint. So to have something within Oakland County, it could be about a 30-minute drive in one of the North County parks, and I will keep you posted about further. There's also a Sheriff Department auction on May 16, and you can either see, go there online. If you go to the county website, www. oakgov.com, you can bid for some things online. You also can go live, and there's a whole, and these are things that have been recovered. They are held, people don't claim them for a certain period of time, and then, once they're not claimed, they're up for sale. This includes Xboxes, bicycles, TVs, cameras, the whole gamma of different things. So I do encourage people, if they want to shop, they can shop at the auction and get some really good deals. And finally, May is Commuting Challenge Month, so as far as riding bicycles, ride share, doing something alternatively to save energy. And I'm sure that Councilwoman Tiana knows more about it. And there is, I do want to remind you that there is, and you can find out more about this commuter challenge under Detroit, commuterchallenge.com, more information. And I do want to remind you that there is a MI, you know, Michigan Ride Share Program, MI Ride Share, where you can also pair up with people for your commute as well. But May is this commuter challenge month, so that's it. Any questions for me?
Questions?
Thanks.
All right, thank you very much. Our next item is a public hearing on the fiscal year 2016 and 2017 budget in consideration to adopt, and we'll start with a presentation by City Manager, Eva Lynch.
This will be the third time that City Council has reviewed this budget. We originally spent all day on Saturday, March 29, reviewing all of the budget for general fund and non-general fund items, as well as did a presentation at the last council meeting on April 13. So this is the third opportunity for the general public as well as City Council to comment on this budget. So the slides are minimal, just because this is the third time, but I wanted to take some time to summarize where we are and to get some further direction before we have this budget approved. So in general, I have a rate overview. It's important to remember that three years ago, we started a multi-year budgeting process, so we try to do two years out. However, at this point, we officially will be approving 2016 with a proposed for 2017. As you can see here, these are the general mill rates that we have that we're projecting. The two that are in red are dependent on whether or not the renewal millage is passed on May 5. So as you know, in 2017, we can't really actually make that decision until we know what happens on Tuesday. So you have your general operating, your voted-approved, heavily override, publicity tax, solid waste, and our debt service, which is our current street millage. So as we move forward, we will take into consideration that we will be approving 2016 and proposing 2017. I'm pleased to announce that for the third, for the next, if we approve 2016 and 17 for sanitation, that'll be three years in a row we were able to keep our rates the same. So we haven't raised rates from sanitation since 2014. So those will continue to remain stable, with a single residential being 125, an apartment unit being 108, and a commercial property being at 216. Last council meeting, we had a presentation made by Plant Moran regarding a water rate modeling program that we went through in great detail. As you know, with the modeling program, it took in many factors to ensure that council was adjusting the water and sewer rates to reflect a more stable environment as we move forward, as we move forward with the water and sewer, and to make sure that we were raising the rates or keeping them the same or lowering them in a manner that would allow us to keep a healthy net position within the water and sewer fund. With that modeling program came a look at, for 2016 and 17, an increase of 2.8% from the current rates of $99 per unit, and with a 3.1% increase in 2017. Just so we, as a reminder, we, this will be our last, this current fiscal year was the third year that we kept rates stable. In fact, this last year, we lowered them 10%, so that 2.8% is actually on the lower of the 10%. So it's not an increase of the 10% that we cut last year plus 2.8. It's actually 2.8 based on that 10% drop that we did last year. So effectively, it's still low, you know, still lower rates than when we had in 2012, actually even earlier than that. So that was their proposal, again, for 2016 and 17, 2.8 and the 3.1 collectively. It was also recommended to keep the readiness-to-serv charge at 29. There was no indication that we needed to raise that at this time. And a reminder that the readiness-to-serv charge is for the capital, what do I want to say, the capital improvement fund, I guess if you would say it's what you need. It's the administrative costs, it's the general operation, it's everything but the water that we buy from Detroit as well as the sewer, the stormwater and sewer. So with that, that was the recommendation, and as we move forward in this presentation and as we end this presentation, we'll be seeking from council direction on if we want to go ahead and implement those rates. You can ask questions anytime now or at the end. One of the things throughout the last couple of years that we've been working through is, again, to try to save as much money as we can in the general fund. We have, over the course of the last couple of years, really tried to increase efficiencies, streamline our process and the way that we do things, and generally find ways to do things as efficiently as possible, as well as use of technology. With that, the city is starting to realize some of those savings, and if it wouldn't been for all of our employees banding together, trying to do that as much as possible, we wouldn't have seen such significant cost savings. In particular, you will notice that the city saved significant money in healthcare, which is almost unheard of, through our wellness opportunities such as Weight Watchers and the M Life Health Clinic and Wellness Center, which has just started and already starting to realize some savings. We also noted some significant pension decline, contributions due to the financial market, which has been doing very well. However, those are one-time costs and are not stable, but however, for 2016, we were able to hold those costs to allow us to move some money into our capital fund to help offset streets. And so with that, when we were, we, the reason we had to put money into capital or try to find money for that is we have depleted all of our money for roads. We officially have no more bond money from the last, the last millage that we had, which is why we're asking for renewal. So any roads that need to be fixed at this point have to come from the general fund unless the millage campaign for the bonds passes on Tuesday, May 5. So for this next year, this is an assumption that, we make an assumption that if the heavily renewal and road bond, street bonds pass, that we have an option then to take the money that we were going to put in capital, which is about 500, a little over 500,000, I believe 560, to apply that in a one-time savings toward a couple of options. The conversation that City Council had at the last meeting was for us to bring back what it would look like if we reduced the heavily override by one mill and take that money from capital and/or move the $500,000, move $500,000 of that to water to see what that would do to the water rates. And again, this is making an assumption, and I hope that the millage, both renewals pass on May 5. If they don't, then this conversation will have to change, and so will the entire budget. So what I did was prepared a couple of cost proposals or cost scenarios, if you will. So if you wanted to take the money that was moved that we have budgeted in capital for the roads, then you could essentially lower the mill up to one. And what I did is I showed up here what that savings would be for. I just took two homes valued at 100,000 or a home valued at 150,000. So if you were to lower the heavy override by one, it would save annually to a taxpayer with a house worth $100,000, $50,000, and to somebody who owned a house that valued at 150,000, it would save them approximately 75 for the year. It was also discussed at the April 13 meeting, there was a conversation on the publicity tax, which is the tax that a community is allowed to utilize to do community relations, to do education components, things of that nature, within the organization. However, that is part of the overall 20 mills. It's not above and beyond the 20. So the question was, what would happen if we were to eliminate that publicity tax? The law allows for one to four mills, however, it cannot exceed $50,000. So we could also, if you were interested, eliminate the publicity tax, which would save an additional $5 to $7.50 a year for, depending on the value of your house. I just focused on two different home values rather than list, you know, 10 or 15 of them, but it kind of gives you an idea. If we were to do the same thing, again, taking that $500,000 from capital for roads and putting it into the water and sewer fund, it didn't have nearly as big of an impact as the reduction of the mill. You can see here, in total, it only allowed another reduction of rates by 0.6%, which for a household of two, it averaged about $1.37 per year, and for a household of four, it would average about $5 a year. So obviously, at that point, it's definitely a difference on what that would look like. So in general, we do have presented a balanced budget with some options. Again, it's important to note that the money that we have saved and put into capital is based on some cost savings that we know we have for this next year, and we're projecting them out to the, not to the following year, but they cannot be guaranteed because of the market and due to healthcare being so volatile. So with that, I'm going to need some direction from City Council on if they would like to keep the money in capital, or if we would like to consider lowering the millage by up to one and/or a reduction of the water and sewer fund, or rates, I should say. So I don't know at this time, you want to open the public hearing, or if you want to comment on that.
Yeah, thank you very much. I think we'll go in order. I'll open the public hearing for anyone who wishes to comment on this, and then we'll have a discussion with council. So with that, Mike, I'm going to bang this gavel.
Okay, thanks a lot.
I'll open the public hearing. Does anybody wish to speak on the budget for 1516? For 1617, sorry. Come on down.
Hi, Council. My name is Katie Hirschberger. Five years ago, I volunteered to serve on the financial committee that looked at our budget, and we looked at it from every which way you could think of. And our recommendation at the time was for the headly amendment. And I don't know what would happen if it doesn't pass this time, because I have, in the back of my mind, there's a little thing that says, if we don't pass it, are we going to lose police and fire? I think tonight's presentation to the police officers and the gentleman from another community that assisted somebody, it's important. We could close that guy in, we had him cornered, we had him trapped, and we got him. He's now probably spending this day in the pokey, where he belongs. If we had to reduce our staffing, we possibly would have been our staffing, we possibly would have been able, not able to capture that man as quickly as we did. Um, I think that the importance of maintaining a budget is going to be good. I don't like raises in taxes. I don't like raises in anything. Um, nobody gives me any more money. But, um, I think that, uh, you need to keep working at a budget that maintains our city services as they are. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please come forward, sir.
Hi, I'm Michael Valentine. I'm on 151 Jewell Street. The only thing I'd like to comment about that is, um, I would prefer that as much allocation be given as possible to the water and sewer fund. Um, the flooding, basement flooding that we've experienced over the past two years, uh, rendered a third of my house pretty much unusable. So any, I appreciate the efforts that have been made to that, but that's an important issue for, uh, so that's my only comment. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing. And, uh, questions, clarification questions, points of order from council?
Well, I, I just wanted, if I may, through the chair, um, I would like to point out that, um, uh, we've talked about this at, at length, and have been had a very open and transparent process. And I'm, this is a, something that we do annually, um, and to approve the millage rate. And, um, I am of the opinion that, um, we should, um, eliminate the publicity tax. When I got onto council, and I, you know, started diving deeper in the tax bill, I'm like, what's this for? And we weren't really sure. Um, and I think we have clarity on that today. Um, and I think that would be another, um, tax reduction for, albeit small, up to $5 or $7 per resident, but, um, it is a tax reduction. Um, and I would also like to say that, um, um, option two is very, um, interesting to me, mostly because in the last five years that I've been on council, since the headly was passed, um, city council has twice levied the full amount of the 5.4552, um, headly mils. And tonight, um, we're exploring of, you know, asking our taxpayers to, or our voters to approve the headly again, but city council is exercising the option not to, um, fulfill the full 5.4 mils. And so I think we've been very good at trying to make sure we're, um, addressing the concerns of our voters in terms of how much do we actually levy? And so, um, I'm, I'm interested in option two, in reducing the operating levy by one mil after it has passed, um, because this is contingent on voters approving on Tuesday, May 5th.
In conjunction with the elimination of the publicity tax?
Yes, in conjunction with the elimination of the publicity tax. The publicity tax is such a small amount of revenue, and I think we've, um, figured out how to, um, do communications and marketing, um, in a different way than this tax has given us the flexibility to do. Or it's, we just don't need it anymore, I don't think.
I agree.
No, I agree too.
Okay, well, the passage of our budget requires two motions, so do you want to, uh, categorize that in the first motion for further discussion, and then we can?
Yes, uh, hang on, let me bring it up. I got them all up here. Um, I move, let me get, make sure I get the right one. Am I doing the full bienn- biennial budget, or?
Yep, both. There's two motions.
Yep. Um, I move to adopt a biennial budget for fiscal years 2015 and 16, and 2016 and 17, as submitted by the city manager on April 27th. Um, um, option two, um, for the fiscal year ending June 30th, of a rate of 27.638 mils shall be levied on the taxable valuation of real personal property. In the city of Ferndale, to provide a 14.5448 mils for general operating purposes, 2.185 mils for refuse collection, 6.4565 mils for general obligation debt service, which is, um, the GAO, and 4.4552 mils for an additional voted operating levy, which is the one mil reduction, as passed affirmatively on May 4th, 2011, and elimination of the publicity and advertising tax in amount of 0.10050 mils.
Support.
Thank you.
Moved by Piana, supported by Pollocka. Very good. Uh, as far as the session goes, I'd just like to say, I, I totally agree. I think that this is another example of how we have always, um, strove, driven, moved towards, uh, strive towards a, um, a, a responsible approach to the stewardship of the money that the city, uh, puts forward to maintain services. I couldn't agree with some of the comments more, that it's important to maintain those services. Um, and I think this is a responsible way to carry that forward, uh, without being careful and let the collector ask for more than they need. Any other comments or discussion?
Um, just, I wanted to thank the due diligence of all the city staff to get us to this point once again this year. You've done a lot of hard work, and it's very much appreciated.
And if you would, I would like to make a couple of comments, uh, to our employees. If it weren't for their, um, desire to be engaged in everything that we've been doing over the last few years to help us with these efficiencies, with these cost savings, we would not be able to do this. They have worked so hard to, uh, work with HR regarding the wellness opportunities, as well as, and even internally in their own departments, of how we can increase efficiencies through the use of technology and things of that nature, um, using the talents that we have to create efficiencies, in particular in DPW. Um, it just, it would not happen if all of our employees weren't engaged in, in being mindful of how we do business and to change the way that we do that. So I just want to, um, publicly thank each and every employee that we have here at the city of Ferndale.
Here, here.
Yeah, I agree.
Uh, if there's no other comments, uh, Marty, will you call the roll?
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Lemon?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
And Mayor Potom Martin.
Yes. Uh, motion carries. And now we have one other motion that we need to pass the rest of the budget.
I move to adopt the approchi- appropriations resolution setting tax rates, water and sewer rates, and sanitation fees for fiscal years 2015, 16, and 2016, 2017, as submitted by the city manager on April 27th, 2015.
Support.
Moved by Piana, supported by Lennon. Any other comments? Great. With that, can we call the roll?
Councilmembers Lennon?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
And Mayor Potom Martin.
Yes. Uh, motion carries. Thank you very much. Uh, next is call the audience. Call the audience as a s-
I have one question.
Sure.
Um, did I omit, um, the rate of 1.3794 mils for the DDA operations? I didn't include that in my-
It's part of the whole.
The, part of the whole thing? Okay.
Yep.
I just want to make sure.
Yep, it was only the part that we had to adjust.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
So the call to audience is strictly for a half an hour. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less, and it's on topics that are not otherwise presented in the agenda. Uh, if we go past a half an hour or need longer, we can add call to audience at the end of the meeting as well. So, Crystal?
Hi, I'm Crystal Paxmeyer of Oakland County 115 News. I would actually like to ask if item eight should be pulled from consent agenda and be put up for public discussion and a roll call vote. If not, I'll take my three minutes, but if we can move it, that would probably be-
Uh, we will have to comment during the consent or after, but I, I hear you, and we'll-
Okay, well, then I'll use my three minutes, I suppose. Um, looking at this, um, this is the decision to ban drones in Ferndale, and there are many reasons that I'm sure other people are going to say why this is a bad idea, or why this is an idea that should be fully thought out before it's, it's voted on. Um, my concern is with the process of this. Ferndale has always been very good about having open government and open discussions about every issue that's come before it. The issue of drones is hugely important for commerce, for journalism, for even the promotion of the city itself. There are so many things, um, in businesses that are touched by drone technology, and so much potential for it, that it seems the move to just ban it outright without, it seems, doing the research on why you're doing that, or what other policies are out there, just doesn't make sense. And I would like the process to be respected, and for stakeholders to have a say in this. I think that you could easily move this to a study session and make sure all voices are heard, and if this is the right decision, then you could do that knowing that you really heard everybody. But reading, reading the ordinance, I can see there are many, um, applications that weren't considered at all. Um, and so I think people want their voice to be heard on this, and I hope you will decide to do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, Mayor Potom, if I may suggest, since this item is on the agenda, that this discussion actually take place during the consent agenda.
Oh, I agree. That's really, that's what I said, that we-
Okay.
Oh, okay, so we'll get discusses.
Absolutely. There'll be an opportunity during the consent agenda to discuss. Any other? Katie?
Yep. I'm going to get here, you just can't shut me up.
I'd be disappointed if you did.
Okay. Uh, I just want to say that any, anybody in this community over the age of 60 can still apply, excuse me, for an absentee ballot. Simply call the clerk's office, they will send you an application, send that back, they will send you the ballot. It can be turned in up to election day. And it is extremely important that we all exercise the opportunity that we have to vote. We have important issues on our local ballot. It's the, uh, headly and the, um, infrastructure, whatever that is. But it's important. We need to maintain these services in our community to stay the vibrant community that we are. And, um, I don't care how you vote on a proposal one, but if one more person calls me about it, I'm going to say some unkind words. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Is there anyone else for public audience? Call audience? All right, with that, we'll move to the consent agenda. Uh, the consent, consent agenda is generally items that we can approve without, um, introducing in detail. However, the public has an opportunity to comment on it, and it's at the, uh, the will of council. So consent agenda, item A, is approval of the minutes of the regular and special meetings held April 13th, 2015. Uh, B is the adoption of the condolence resolution for Bob Taylor as submitted by council member Lennon. C is the adoption of condolence resolution for Richard Nathan as submitted by council member Lennon. D is the adoption of the proclamation honoring Ann Heller for being named as a Wonder Woman by the One Foundation, as submitted by council member Piana. E is the approval to purchase one 2015 Ram Quad Cab 4x4 pickup truck for $24,320, and approximately $2,500 for vehicle equipment changeover, for a total amount of $26,820 from general fund, motor pool account number 101-443-977. Item F is the approval to purchase one 2016 Ford Explorer, all-wheel drive for $2,250, and approximately $1,500 for vehicle equipment changeover, for a total amount of $28,750 from drug forfeiture, account number 265-000-977. Item G is approval of the 2015 Dream Cruise presenting sponsorship agreement between the city of Ferndale and Team Detroit LLC as agent for Ford Motor Company, and authorization of the mayor's signature as submitted by the director's special events. Item H is the adoption of ordinance number 1160 to amend chapter 12 misdemeanor offenses, article 5, public nuisances generally, section 12-114 of the Ferndale Code of Ordinances, as submitted by city attorney. And I is the approval of bills and payrolls as submitted, uh, by the city manager's office, subject to review by the council finance committee. And as a point of order, I would like to, uh, it's been requested by councilwoman Piana to read the proclamation honoring Ann Heller. I know Ann's here today, so let's take a moment. We can read the proclamation and, and, uh, give Ann the honor she deserves.
Um, I have the, um, honor of recognizing Ann Heller tonight on behalf of the, um, One Foundation, which is the, um, women's official network of, um, really of Oakland County. Um, and it's really encouraging more women to become involved in public policy, um, through elected and appointed office. And Ann Heller has always served the Ferndale, um, community and the broader region, um, uh, through her compassion and, um, her, her love of helping people. Mayor Dave Coulter, on the half, on behalf of the Ferndale City Council, extends the city's gratulations to Ann Heller for being named as a two, 2015 Wonder Woman by the One Foundation. The award honors women who have improved the quality of life in southeast Michigan through their civic, philanthropic, and professional accomplishments. Ann Heller has dedicated her life to helping others. Her career as an educator spans decades and includes work in Detroit Public Schools and Wayne Russa. Ann has authored resource packets and enriched curriculum for exceptional children, and has received many awards for her work, including ARX Michigan Teacher of the Year. She is a recipient of the Sorro- Sorroptimus Ruby Award in recognition of her work improving the lives of women. She is a founding member and president of the Fern Care Free Clinic, which offers, offers medical services to people without insurance. Ann has been appointed to variety of state, regional, and city boards, including MDEA Special, MDE Special Ed Rules Guidelines Revision Committee, Community Media Network Board, and the Ferndale Human Rights Ordinance Study Committee. Ann Heller is a credit to this community, and is with heartfelt appreciation that we celebrate her achievement. And on Thursday, um, of this week, um, the Wonder Woman Awards will be having a, a dinner celebrating accomplishments of four or five women, and Ann is, um, one of the recipients. So Ann, thank you for everything you do for the community.
Ann, come up. Share. Next, I'll open up for any public comment on anything on the consent agenda. Please keep your comments to three minutes.
I thought we were going to-
Yeah, we need to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, I'm sorry, one moment. We approve the consent agenda?
Yeah. Um, I actually make a motion, uh, because in order to properly discuss this item, uh, with, uh, public and to, um, uh, have open dialogue, I request that we remo- we move 7H to the regular agenda-
Oh, okay.
-um, for proper discussion.
Okay, very good. Any other comments on the consent agenda?
Make motion to approve the consent agenda minus 7H.
Moved by Lennon. Support?
Support.
Support by Piana. Marty, will you call the roll?
Councilmembers Pollocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yeah.
And Mayor Potom Martin.
Yes, I'm sorry, I was somewhat negligent. H is now on the regular agenda item. If there is anyone who'd like to say anything about anything other than H on consent, please feel free to come forward. I didn't mean to exclude you. Okay, I didn't think so. So we'll move to the regular agenda now, and regular agenda item A is consideration to appoint Dan Martin and Ann Heller to the Ferndale Housing Commission.
Well, they need some guidance over there, and, uh, I couldn't think of two better candidates.
Thank you very much.
Um, we've definitely heard from residents at our last city council meeting, and, um, we've taken to their comments to heart, um, and really wanted to have a good response. And so, um, uh, thank you, Councilman Martin, for stepping up on behalf of, um, city council to sit on the housing commission. And again, thank you for Ann. Uh, we can add another, uh, commission to your list that I, uh, talked about tonight. And so, um, I think, um, we will be very well represented, and so will the residents, um, of, of our, um, two, two buildings, so. Um, I move to confirm the appointment of Ann Heller and Dan Martin to the Ferndale Housing Commission for a term ending May 5th, 2019.
Support.
Moved by Piana, supported by Pollocka. I'll just make a comment. For obvious reasons, I'll abstain from the vote. Um, but I am looking forward to the work that's yet to be done that Ann and I can get involved with. And, um, I think that building a stronger partnership between the city and the housing commission, even though the city has somewhat limited, uh, oversight there, I think the opportunities, um, are there to really, uh, help them move forward and do some good, and, um, and, and make a difference in that area. So I'm looking forward to the work. So thank you very much for your support today. With that, Marty, will you call the roll?
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
And Pollocka?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Um, all right, next is regular agenda item B, which is adoption of ordinance number 1160 to amend chapter 12 misdemeanor offenses, article 5, public nuisances generally, section 12-114 of the Ferndale Code of Ordinances, as submitted by the city attorney. Is someone going to introduce the item?
Uh, I can introduce it. Um, last year, a couple of residents, there were a couple of incidents, separate instances, that, um, happened in our parks that, uh, residents brought to my attention. And they had some concerns over, um, the public use of drones, um, based on those activities. And so, working with Dan, I brought those to, uh, our city attorney's attention, and, uh, he spent the last several months looking at, uh, FAA, um, uh, guidelines. And, uh, at that point, I'm going to turn it back over to you, Dan.
Certainly. Uh, thank you. Through the chair, uh, this was a referral to the ordinance committee to take a look at the issue of drones and bring back, uh, uh, some language that would, uh, potentially regulate that for council's consideration. Uh, and, uh, it is, as indicated in my correspondence, there is currently a, uh, rule- And it is, as indicated in my correspondence, there is currently a rulemaking, public input process that is taking place by the FAA as it relates to drones, and the ordinance committee thought that the issue in general should be brought to council's attention to determine whether or not it was appropriate to regulate drones within the city of Ferndale. As drafted for discussion, the draft ordinance would regulate drones except for law enforcement purposes and except for on private property. This is a very fluid area of technology, it's ever-changing. I think the ordinance committee was sensitive to that and recognized that, but in light of the FAA not having adopted its final rules to govern drones or unmanned aerial systems, it was thought that this issue should at least be brought to council's attention.
Very good, thank you. Now, I will open it up for public comment on this topic. Again, if you can keep your comments to three minutes, we'd appreciate it, and go ahead, please.
Hello, my name is Harry Arnold, I'm the owner of Detroit Drone. I'm here representing our user group, Detroit Drone User Group, and we have about four hundred members in the metro Detroit community, and we're all people that fly drones for different reasons, but we all are lovers of the technology and adopters of it. And I guess I wanted to agree, all the comments that I've heard so far are very true, the comment period ended Sunday, and now the FAA is gonna release the rules that they have combined out of all the comments and everything. Oh, there's a drone right there. And we have more drones in the house, they'll be flying soon. I just wanted to, in short, say that our group with over four hundred members would like to avail ourselves, some of our members are in line, we want to avail ourselves to help if you decide to form a study group in how you might implement rules that would allow drones to be safely integrated into the ways that your residents have to enjoy themselves. I've been doing career days with the Detroit Fire Department, who I work with in the process of adopting drones, that they're going through with their department, and going and seeing the kids' faces light up when the drones come out, and just imagining the different uses that these things can be put to. I tell people, my grandfather saw the introduction of the car, my father saw the introduction of television, I saw the introduction of the internet, and these children are seeing the introduction of the drone. And I don't want, I would humbly beg you guys not to do anything that would crush the spirit of innovation and entrepreneurship that the drone era is rushing, ushering in. There is a need for regulation, both from the FAA and locally. Nobody wants to disturb anybody at a park, but this can be done, I believe, humbly with a more piecemeal approach than a blanket ban, which would kind of make Ferndale stick out for being one of the only communities to adopt such a broad ban. And so, again, I would like to avail our services, if you'd like to come see drones fly, if you'd like to talk to us, we have meetings, so I'll pass out business cards afterwards.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you.
Sure. Hello, sir.
Hi, Keith Dalton, I know most of you here, resident of Ferndale. I guess I just want to address that, I've been always so proud of Ferndale because we're always fighting to give people more rights and be ahead of the game of not taking things away. And as I hear about this ban, it just really sounds like, have any of you been and watched a drone? Do you really know anything about the drone? Do you know that a drone camera, that are any of these are wider than your cell phone? So if you stand forty feet away, I can't really spy on you, I'd have to fly in your face to get a close-up to identify you, they're loud, you can hear them. And really, to think that everybody here who owns a drone has got some nefarious purpose in mind that we need to ban it is actually kind of insulting to us all, because we don't make that same assumption about guns or cars that do two hundred miles an hour, and we rely on people to respect the law and be proper stewards of their society. Everybody here flies for pleasure, and maybe they shoot some real estate or they do some, but nobody is flying to spy or to invade your privacy or to do anything really nefarious at all, because I interneted, and there's no crime across the United States, serious crime, that has been committed by a drone. The crimes everybody speaks of at the White House or other places, those people were already violating existing federal law. So another little law that if somebody nefariously wants to do something, isn't gonna stop because there's an ordinance. What you're really doing by banning them is stopping people from me or these guys to go to one of the parks and fly around. I think you find most people here, if you go over and ask a drone guy, hey, don't kind of fly over my kids here playing basketball, and they go, okay, I've done it. I've also had people, when I was flying at the park, I didn't fly over, and I had parents come over and go, can you shoot that from overhead? And then tell me where I can get it on YouTube? So I just think you guys are rushing into a ban without really knowing all the, I think TV has hyped it up. These drones are not like the military drones where they can be three miles away and focus in on, they have to be wide-angle, because it's, we've all had our video camera, when you zoom in, your little bit of shake is all of a sudden, so it's a wide-angle shot. So think about it, and don't ban them.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate your comments. Next.
I'm Michael Valentine, this is Maya Valentine, and we just wanted to make a comment about the potential ban of drones. I, I'll just be perfectly honest, I think an outright ban is kind of ludicrous, because in reality, all a drone is, is it's a hobby aircraft. It's not anything, you know, it's just, we call it a drone now because it sounds neat, but, I mean, to be honest, what if I take a GoPro camera and mount it on a kite? Is it a drone then? I mean, it's, and, you know, talking about personal privacy, there's nothing that's invaded people's personal privacy than this, but yet we're not making an attempt to ban smartphones. So, I mean, we were planning on, this summer, going into the park, flying, you know, and doing things that teach younger children about engineering, things that are great for the future and things like that. So I just think the idea of a blanket ban on drones is really ill-conceived. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, thank you, Maya. Hi, welcome.
My name is Jonathan Hare, I live in Royal Oak, so this hits home for me, and I appreciate getting an opportunity to speak on this. I'm an engineer at Ford Motor Company. I've been involved in model aviation for twenty years. I have some really big stuff and I have some really small stuff that'll fit in the palm of your hand, too. So I think it's kind of crazy to lump them all together. Model aviation matters to me because I grew up doing that, and I think that's what led me to become an engineer. Many of the skills that I use every day, I actually attribute to experiences that I had in a hobby. I had the chance, when I was in high school and college, to teach kids how to fly model aircraft, so I observed in them that same fascination, and we put a big influence on STEM studies in school. Well, this is, this is what got me involved in STEM, I think it's very important. So I, it's really strange for me that such a wholesome activity as model aviation is being discussed in a criminal way. I think that's crazy. I can't, I can't think of a more wholesome activity than kids playing with small model aircraft at the local park. And the fact of the matter is, is that RC aircraft are safer than they've ever been. What we call drone, and I don't like to use the D-word typically, is actually a very intelligent machine. That's a good thing. Model aircraft used to be very difficult to fly, now it's become very easy, that's a good thing. And as a previous gentleman said, it's a really bad device to spy with. I can't think of a worse way to invade someone's privacy than to use my quadcopter. It's not loud, but it makes enough buzz, it's not gonna sneak up on you. It's a terrible device to spy on, so please don't get into the media frenzy. It's a wholesome activity, don't ban drones. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
My name's Louis Paul. Ferndale resident. I, again, like them, are just hooked up on drones, love. Again, the term drone is something that you would consider like with a military drone, and it's not. It's just a toy, like the old expression, the difference between men and boys is the price of our toys. They're nothing more than a toy, and like he said, as far as trying to zoom in on somebody and get a picture from, this is the same unit I have. You're gonna be grainy, I won't even know who you are. So, and like I said, I live over by the park, and I fly mine quite often. In fact, I told my wife I might fly it one last time in case you guys do, but I hope you don't. Like I said, they're just toys, and a real drone is something that none of us would really have, the true drone. These are just glorified helicopters. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Nate Vazanson, I'm a Royal Oak resident, but I represent, I serve on the Board of Directors of a nonprofit in Ferndale called I Three Detroit, and we have about a hundred and thirty members who I think are all stakeholders in this. We are a do-it-yourselfers, a nonprofit workshop for inventors, artists, makers, we're a kind of a creative center for tech innovation. And when we moved out of our old building, we chose Ferndale as our new home, because we saw this as a progressive and welcoming place for tech development, we're really proud to be here. I think the, we can all appreciate the goal of this, of this proposed ordinance, to protect privacy, but I don't think it does that directly. I think it does that in an overly broad way that threatens to have a lot of unintended consequences that, you know, as we've acknowledged, this is a complex issue, the FAA is still working on it, and we, there was, there was something I saw in the proposed ordinance that would carve out, that said that cannot be flown in the city unless, except in areas designated by council. And I'd like to inquire what it takes to have our block or our building designated as an area where people could freely fly drones. But I wanted to say that we've used drones, technology to record videos that were used in a contest entry that won us in national publicity, you know, as other points have been made about STEM education, we work with robotics teams, we've, you know, we do a lot of stuff with education and obvious development of these new technologies. And I'd like to encourage you to, please continue to, you know, protect people's privacy, but do so in a more specific way.
Thank you for your comments. Hello, sir.
Hi. My name is John Rosa, I'm actually a resident of Oak Park. One of my goals is to eventually move to Ferndale, find a nice house over there.
Everybody's goal is to move to Ferndale.
Yes, exactly. So, but it kind of scared me when I saw that, I saw an article that said that Ferndale's gonna ban all drones. I own a small business, Detroit Do-It-Yourself Electronics, and I kind of focus on new technologies, and I make them easier to use for my customers, and I provide services to them with the new technologies. And I've recently been interested in drones, which I really, like everybody else, do not want to call it a drone, quadcopter, hexacopter. When people think of a drone, they think of what they're flying overseas and being used to kill people. These devices are very obviously different technology, and so I've only been in the hobby for a couple of months, but I've, every time I go fly, I find an area that's wide open. I've gone to, I think it's Hunter Park and several other, a couple of schools, to be, well, a couple of schools where there's a wide-open baseball field, make sure nobody's around, and I fly it very safely. Now, these devices, they can be, you know, the size of a tennis ball, or they can be several pounds, and, you know, mount a large video camera. And to ban all these devices, you're going to stand in the way of students who are interested in science or math. You know, I'm worried that the Ferndale High School, if students wanted to learn how to fly these devices, well, sorry, you can't fly them in, you know, Ferndale, or you're gonna get a misdemeanor. You know, it's kind of, it sounds very irrational to me. So, so I suggest to, you know, do some research, and, you know, some regulations is fine, but an outright ban, I think I would consider living somewhere else when I do eventually buy a house in the area. I think that's a reactionary response, and if you guys need any help, you know, there's a whole, obviously, community that would be willing to help you make the policy decisions on exactly how to create a licensing program or anything, but I think an outright ban is irrational. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Good evening.
Good evening. I was fortunate, three years ago, to move into Ferndale from Atlanta.
I don't mean to interrupt you, but you should give your name and address.
It's Christian Rogers, I live on Wordsworth Street.
Great, thank you.
So three years ago, I did move out of, from out of state here into Ferndale, and with talking with people where to live, I was sold on the fact that Ferndale, because of this sense of community. And here I am, I never thought I'd be standing before you guys, and, but basically, it sounds like now the Ferndale that I know is painting a little bit with a broad brush, and that's very un-Ferndale-like. I believe there should be some sort of regulation, sure, but a two-thousand-dollar drone to, you know, two-hundred-dollar drone, you know, there's big differences. This is my forty-eight-dollar drone, which is probably not even a pound in weight, it goes up maybe a hundred feet. It has a two-megapixel camera, which is not even the equivalent of the very first iPhone in two thousand and seven, so its capabilities are extremely limited, except for just creating a little bit of mindless, actually not mindless, but some fun for about eight minutes at a time in a park. And, you know, the point has been made, I guess, very clearly here about the privacy concern, and that some of the concern kind of seems like it's, you know, unfound. To me, the second part of the ordinance was, you know, bodily harm. Well, I brought my trusty little ultimate frisbee here. I could almost argue, you know, in a community park, that this, which weighs more, heavy or plastic, being thrown around in the wind can create even more personal injury than my forty-eight-dollar, you know, twelve-ounce drone. So before we go and just make a broad-out ban, I would just ask for some reconsideration to maybe not paint such a broad picture, and, you know, just try to think and do the right thing, and let's continue the conversation. So, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Hello, sir.
I'm not a resident of Ferndale, I'm a resident of Clausen, Paul Resnick, I live over by fourteen in Rochester. First of all, I know that you, as council members, you have to weigh in people's concerns with certain things, when people are calling, saying, you know, if somebody was flying their drone in the park, you have to do something about it. I'd just like to reiterate what everybody else here has already said, please don't get into the hype. The very same, I guarantee you, the very same people that are complaining about drones spying on me are the very same people that go to a Detroit Tigers game or a football game, wave at the jumble, trying to say, rock and roll, dude. They don't seem to be worried about anybody spying with them. I mean, it's ridiculous. So if you want, if you want to pass laws, I'd hope, as, again, I'll reiterate what they said, put some intelligence into it, read up on it, we'll help you out with it. As drone flyers, again, we're not spying on you, how can I spy on you with my drone? It's ridiculous. And I also do not like calling them drones. What I, what do I like to call them? The same thing that's been called since the end of World War II, radio-controlled modeling. Have you ever heard of anybody complaining about somebody flying a rail-controlled airplane in the park from ten, fifteen years ago? If it wasn't a problem then, then why is it a problem now? It's ridiculous. Please don't get into the hype. People don't even understand what a drone is, what it can and cannot do. So when they call you on the phone and say, would you please pass a law, I'm scared, well, I'm sorry you're scared, but you just need to teach yourself and do research on it, you'll find that it's, again, it's mostly hype, it's ridiculous. And I don't want to take up too much of your time, because most of the people here, I'm glad, have already said what I wanted to say, so thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Sure.
Good evening, councilwomen and men. My name is Gary Vaslinic, I'm a resident, longtime resident of Ferndale, I own a small business here, Santa's Chimney Service and Repair, and I use this drone to inspect chimneys, especially on the west side of Ferndale, when you can't get a to inspect chimneys, especially on the west side of Ferndale, when you can't get a ladder next to the house. They don't make a 60-foot ladder unless I borrow Chief Sullivan's ladder truck and he hoists me up on the top of it so I can inspect it. And what this does is has a camera that shoots down and I can take a picture of the crown wash on top of the chimney to see, and then I can fly around the chimney to see the brick, if there's any repair and the mortar has been repaired. And that's part of the inspection for, that is turned into Chris Lovelace, our city inspector on rental homes. So, this is why I use it. And to me, to ban all drones is like a witch hunt. This is a, I have to be very careful with this drone itself, because one of these, you're walking to inspect it, it's lighter than a coffee cup, and it's, I have the control, GPS control, so where I launch it from, it returns. Now, I don't know if you are familiar with the propulsion systems for this. This is a Wi-Fi drone. It's only good for 165 feet, horizontal and vertical. So, from this point, 165 feet there and there. When it gets to that edge, it flashes and I hit the, my tablet, my eye tablet, and it comes back and lands where I launched it from. Okay? So, if I get close to a chimney, if one of these props hit the brick, this thing's 86th, you know? I mean, so I have to be very careful with it. It's not, maybe really hyped it up, oh, property damage, we're worried about property damage. If anything, this runs into, you may dent a house or maybe break a storm window, but that'd be it. You're not gonna hurt anybody with one of these, they're just not there. So, I appreciate if you consider all logic, because the other drone, the only other propulsion system for it is an RF, a radio frequency. Those are capable of going a mile, so 5,280 feet either way, up or horizontal. That's the ones they're having their problems with at the airport when planes are landing at 2,800 feet. If one of those gets sucked into an engine, you're gonna have like a bird hit, and that's what they're concerned about. That's the RF. This is a Wi-Fi, it's only good for 165 feet. So, I appreciate you investigating us and make a wise decision, 'cause I know you always will. Thank you.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it. Dennis Roy, sir.
Dennis Morrison, 1550 Spencer. I look at these things here and I'm just wondering, okay, because is it because of the way these things look, you know, that we're gonna make an issue out of this? Because let's face it, we've had model planes battery-operated with joysticks and stuff like that and buttons that can go that high. Okay? They can. And they can be used, as the government has, for spying. Okay? You, 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 anybody, doesn't matter who you are, they can be used. Okay? Are we gonna take and say, okay, that we're gonna ban this? Okay? But then, if we do that, why not the regular model airplanes? Okay? We all had, I don't know, maybe you guys didn't, but we had them when we were kids and that. Are we gonna start banning every little thing just because this here is something that the government came up with and it's being used all around the world as a spy? Bombs, you name it. Okay? When I was in the service, and we've all seen this, Bad Boys movies, Clint Eastwood movies and that, they had the cars with the bombs on them. Okay? Are we gonna start banning fire extinguishers? Because when I was in the service, compact fire extinguishers were used, you know, when you sat down in that car, they had the mechanism in there and it set off the car. Okay? Boom, you're gone. Okay? I mean, where's it gonna end? If you're gonna start banning this, then you might as well start banning all the aircraft that can fly in the air, that kids enjoy in the parks and that. It's unfortunate that that's the way it is nowadays, but that's our world we live in. Okay? I mean, glider planes, my uncle flew one in World War II. He was the only survivor. When that glider landed in Normandy and that. So, I mean, we really gotta look at this here, you know? I mean, if these guys ain't getting up that high, and from what I understand from an article I just read, these can go as high as like 2,500 feet. Okay? And that. But I mean, if we started banning everything, then let's face it, the kids ain't gonna have toys to play with. Okay? And that. And I mean, so I'd really have to take, ask that you guys take a good look at this. I don't own one of these, but just take a good look at it before you start making any decisions that might be regrettable later on and that. It just looks funky, but make it look like an aircraft and then tell me what you see. Do you see a possibility of a terrorist attack? Because that's basically what you guys are thinking of, is terrorism. Okay? When I was in Germany, a shoebox, several shoeboxes were loaded with explosives all around my barracks. Okay? Set them off. And that, they were found, they were set off, you know? Briefcases. You know, how many of you guys carry a briefcase? You do attorney, don't you, Mr. Attorney?
You should address your comments to the chair.
You know, I'm just plain and simple.
I know, you're making a point.
Where are you gonna go with this here? I mean, are you gonna just keep on going like this? You know? We gotta think about this a little more.
Thank you for your comments.
Can I just make two quick points?
Very quickly.
One, everybody keeps saying how high they go. Well, the minute you go over 400 feet, you're breaking federal aviation law for low-flying aircraft. There's a 400-foot ceiling for ultralights and everybody else that isn't, you know, approved by the watchtower guys, the controllers. And if you're by an airport, by law, you fly anything other than what's in that airport, I don't care if it's manned or a drone, by law, you have to contact the control tower, get permission and file a flight report that. So, if you fly by an airport, you haven't done that, you're already breaking existing FAA law. So, there's laws out there for all these things that flying up and, while those people are being irresponsible and must be rich, because $4,000 I spent on my drone, I don't take it to 2,800 feet where I can't see it, because I can't afford to lose $4,000 like that just to go see if it can go that high.
All right, thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Tony Lejeune, I live in Warren. I just, I think most of the comments that people have made here have been, I agree with. One of the things I have concerns about a blanket ban on drones is I believe that potentially the people who are afraid of the drones are uneducated or the fear of the unknown about what they're capable of or what they're not capable of. And I would like to suggest that the council makes sure that they're educated in what these things can and can't do. There are gonna people, gonna be people who take any device that you have, skateboards, bikes, cars, telephones, and use them for nefarious activities. I mean, someone takes a phone and calls in a bomb threat to a school, do we ban the phone? No. You know, it's, there are gonna be people who do things. So, I think that regulations are appropriate, but just a widespread blanket ban is somewhat of a knee-jerk reaction, and I think education is the answer to understanding what they're capable of. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Yes, my name's Gary Maynard. I live at 694 Camden here in Ferndale. Been a resident for over 15 years. Just like to agree with just about everything everyone else has said up here. There are other uses for drones. There's commercial photography, wedding photography, the one gentleman there uses it for inspections, documentaries, education. I use my kites, and I actually have been a professional kite flyer for years, but that's beside the point. I have cameras on those and would that be part of the ban and stuff like that? I just wanna say that I agree. And one of my other ones was, what was it? I can shoot off a firework right next to my neighbor's house and that's okay, but if I take my little drone, you know, that's it.
Thank you for your comments. All right, with that, thank you, I'm gonna close public comment. And what is the discretion of council at this point?
Well, can I say something?
This is your time to make this.
I understand Councilman Pollock's intentions wholeheartedly when he introduced this. This was extremely informative for these people coming up here and really enlightened me. We got a regular drone gate going on right here. At the local level, I don't think this needs to be addressed. I personally will wait for the FAA's decision, and I think there's something maybe the state and the feds need to handle, and I would have already known for it anyways, you know? That's public Detroit. Not mine, not mine, not mine. I think we need to educate ourselves a little further and maybe cable this for a discussion.
Through the chair, I would like to say that one thing you can always count on this council is that we really take residents' concern seriously. You have a complaint and you talk to council, we really investigate and address it. And so, I applaud you for really listening to our residents. But I am of the opinion that this needs more time. I grew up, girls like their toys too. I grew up playing with modeled airplanes and flying them around in my neighborhood. And so, I really think we need to perhaps free the drones, if I'm going along with drone gate.
Drone gate, yeah.
And really, I think a lot of pop culture is fueling some of the fears of between the spy movies, Minority Report and Terminator. So, I think we should take a step back and look at what the FAA does and also look at our ordinance. You know, I don't know when the original ordinance was written, but it says model airplanes. And so, it leads me to believe that this ordinance is somewhat old and outdated. And so, not only, with the exception of aerial vehicles or unmanned aerial vehicles, I've heard tonight that perhaps we shouldn't be even calling them the D-word, the drone word, but looking at our existing ordinance with model airplanes, 'cause I'm sure that model airplanes had cameras on them at some point too in the 80s and 90s. So, not really sure where this could really go, but I think some more investigation is definitely needed. And some guidance by the FAA. And I'm also interested in understanding what type of inquiries other cities have made to the Michigan Municipal League. They're usually our guidance organization to help look at ordinances and policies that are being, that are under evolution.
I agree. I would say a few comments, then I'll let you have closing statements, Greg or whatever on this. I think that, I do applaud Councilman Pollock for bringing it forward. The one thing I'll echo about what this council will do is we will have difficult discussions and bring discussions up that residents bring to us. I tend to agree with my colleagues, I don't know that I wanna take any action on this tonight, because, you know, clearly, I mean, there's many facets to this issue, so.
I agree.
Councilman Pollock?
Sure. Well, I brought it up because it was brought up by residents. They asked me to look into it, and we could have spent months and months talking to all of you individually and then creating a very defined rule, but this got you all out here. It got your attention. And so, now we know, and the public knows, what Ferndale wants us to do. I do wanna make a statement, I wanna make a correction to Mr. Dalton, the ceiling is actually 500 feet. I have done my homework. So, but I wanna thank everybody for coming out, and I agree with my fellow council members, I don't think right now is the time to vote on this.
All right. So, the agenda item dies for lack of any support at this point. Before we move on, I'd just like to add my thanks for all of you coming out. This was very insightful to hear you all, so thank you very much for participating. Next agenda item is call to council. This is our opportunity to hear updates from our staff and council people. Carol, Carol, we'll start with you.
Nice prop.
Good evening.
So, we are listening to residents on social media and in the community and know that there are still some questions about the local ballot proposals that will be on the May 5 special election. So, I wanted to provide a quick update about how and where residents can get information about ballot proposal two, the Headley renewal, and ballot proposal three, the streets and parks improvement bond. First, we will be holding our second town hall event this Wednesday, April 29th, 7:00 PM. It will be here at City Hall. And we will have city staff here covering some frequently asked questions, as well as being on hand to answer questions directly that residents may have, you know, speak to people one-on-one. It's a great opportunity for people to learn about the ballot proposals, as well as get all their questions answered before the election next week, so we encourage everybody to come out. I will add also that it will be aired live on our Cable Access channel at that time. If people are not able to actually come out for the event, we do have a recording of our previous town hall event in its entirety up on YouTube now, so people can access that by going to youtube.com and searching Ferndale Town Hall. We are also answering FAQs on our Facebook and Twitter, as well as sharing the brochures that we've done, talking about some general election information, some other helpful stuff like that. So, we would encourage people to connect with us on Facebook and Twitter to get that information. That would be facebook.com/ferndale.michigan, and they can find us on Twitter using our handle @ferndalemich. Additionally, on social media, residents can get our attention by using the hashtags we created. This would be on all social channels, so Facebook, Twitter, and even Instagram. You can use hashtag FerndaleProp2 and hashtag FerndaleProp3, and that will get our attention and we can make sure that we can respond to your questions and comments. To ask questions and have them answered directly, we do have an email address set up directly for this. That would be proposals2015@ferndalem.gov. And finally, all the information that I'm mentioning here is available on the city's website. We've got a page that we've got exclusively for this information, and that can be found at ferndalem.gov/government.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Derek, anything from your department? Chief Collins?
I was gonna drone out about.
Oh, such effort. Thank you, chief. Jenny?
Human Resources.
I just wanted to share a little bit of data that we've recently received. Our clinic, our My Life Health and Wellness Center is still going strong, and last month, or earlier this month, we received some feedback and some data from our center that told us that of the medications that have been dispensed at our clinic, had those been filled in, through our Blue Cross plan, they would have cost the city an additional 64%. So, we're saving some drastic, we have some drastic savings in terms of the medications that have been dispensed out of the clinic, and we continue to find good utilization, and we appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. We have Carlos Kennedy here from DPW today. Thanks for joining us.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Simple announcement, DPW would like to let everyone know that compost will be available starting this Friday, May 1st, free of charge for all Ferndale residents. It's gonna be available at Harding, Martin Road, Wilson, and Gary Parks. In addition, we also have compost available at the DPW Yard and the Kulak Center. Makes it more easier to access for all residents on either side of the city. Once again, it's free of charge, and, but an important fact is it's self-loading, so the residents have to load their vehicles or containers themselves, they'll get no help from any DPW staff, so.
Just clarification, it's no longer at the South Yard?
Not on Saturdays, that's why we're putting them out at locations, so if they can load themselves, they'll have more access to it.
It's available anytime, they can just go to the park and there'll be a pile.
Exactly. It'll be, we'll have signage there, and whoever wants to get it, it's free.
Great, thank you. Thanks, Carlos, I appreciate it. Joe, anything from our chief innovation officer?
Nothing.
Chief Sullivan, fire department?
Nothing tonight, Joe.
Wow. Marnie?
Yes. Katie kinda stole my thunder about the AV ballots, but that's okay, we'll talk about it again. Actually, anyone over the age of 60 or for a variety of other reasons can still get an absentee ballot up through Saturday, May 2nd, and we will be in the office from 9:00 to 2:00 Saturday on May 2nd for the purpose of issuing absentee ballots. So, if you haven't got yours yet and you may be out of town or meet one of the other reasons, please come and see us. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. City manager, April Lynch?
Just another reminder, I know Kara had mentioned it, but our town, our last town hall is Wednesday at 7:00 here at City Hall. hall is Wednesday at seven o'clock here at City Hall. For anybody who's interested in learning more about proposals two and three that are on the ballot, we encourage anybody with any questions to please come to that meeting. And that's all I have for tonight.
Great, thanks. I'm so sorry I missed Jill out there from our Rec Department, I'm sorry. We don't get to do this a whole lot, so.
Just a couple of quick announcements. Coming up on Saturday, June thirteenth, is our annual trunk and treasure sale, where folks can apply for a vendor application. It's a great chance to clean out your closets, garage, basement. The sale will be at City Hall Parking Lot. You will get one parking space to, to sell your, to sell your goods. Applications are available online at ferndalemi.gov. In conjunction with our sale, I was going to say it, Ferndale is also having their sale the same day, right down the street, I believe from eight to five. Second announcement, if anyone is looking for a location this summer for graduation party, birthday party, we are currently accepting park rental applications at our pavilions at Gary Park and Martin Road Park, as well as we do rent out picnic areas at Harding, Wilson, and Garbit as well.
I'm glad you mentioned that, Joe, because I just got an email today from a local business wants to have a company party May nineteenth at Martin Road.
Yep, they can contact our office.
Go right up to the Kulik Center, and they can take care of biz. And I think that's during the week, you can still have somebody there to open it up and unlock the ball field.
Yep. And just a reminder, we, for the second season, we are reserving parks on Sundays as well. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. City Attorney, Dan Crist?
Very briefly, thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to bring to council's attention that the Michigan Liquor Control Commission has commenced its administrative hearing regarding Glow Nightclub Midwest's appeal of its close order that was issued by the LCC. That close order was continued by the LCC, and the hearing will be continued this Thursday.
Great, thank you very much. Councilman Lennon?
Other than the fact that please get out and vote whether, which way you feel about our props, we just need you to get to the polls. So, but I encourage you to vote yes. We really need it. Thank you.
Sure. Councilman Pollock?
Two things. One, don't forget Clean the Ferndale Up is May sixteenth. We'll be meeting right here on the side of the building, starting eight AM for registration or check-in. You can register actually online at www.cleantheferndaleup.com. We have twelve different sites that we're going to be working on, and the website actually details what is going to be happening at each of the locations. So, encourage everybody to do that. We're only asking for a couple of hours of your time. And this Wednesday at five thirty, it was, the last council meeting, I announced it that it was going to be this past Friday, and some things came up that we couldn't do it last Friday, so we actually changed it to this Wednesday. April twenty-ninth at five thirty, we are having a ribbon-cutting ceremony for Garbit Park. We have a new place structure that's being installed, as well as some walking paths. DPW has spent a lot of time and energy in, in cleaning up Garbit Park, and so we just want to celebrate the reopening of that park to the community. So, I encourage everybody, if you're, if you're not familiar with where Garbit Park is, it's located on Eight Mile at Allen. Some people know it.
Fielding.
Fielding, I'm sorry. Eight Mile Fielding, right by Taft School. And then again, that's five thirty. That's all I have.
Should have pretty great weather on Wednesday, too.
We should.
A lot warmer than last week.
Councilwoman Piana?
Sure. I'm encouraging everybody to vote yes on proposal two for the Headley renewal and the Streets and Parks Bond. I'm really supportive of maintaining services at the level that they are now, and we've worked really hard to create efficiencies and streamline government in the last five years. And I'm very proud of those changes we've made, and they haven't been easy for, for staff to do. And I also support having flexibility with our, our millage that the voters have allowed us for the last five years. And one of the questions is why not a public safety millage? Is it because our residents really like the quality of service by multiple departments here, including city administration or community economic development, which is support services for our businesses, which doesn't get very often, mentioned very often, and we don't want to make them cut back during what seems to be a period of growth of our businesses. So, I'm very strongly supporting proposal two and proposal three. And then, I wanted to talk about proposal one, the road funding at the state level. I haven't said anything publicly yet, but I'm holding my no's and voting yes. And as our Michigan Municipal League has said, it's the last best chance for our roads. And while I don't agree what the legislators have done in order to get us to this spot, it really does restore revenue back to cities for revenue sharing, supports our schools, and provides dedicated road funding. There is no Plan B, and I don't think our state will have the best interest of our cities, schools in mind if it fails. So, again, holding my no's and I'm voting yes, and I encourage others to do as well. And I just got a ding in my brand-new windshield, and I blame all the potholes on the highway.
Thank you. Lastly, I, I'm just going to echo what you've already heard today. Personally, I'm not going to tell you what I think about proposal one. I think that's a decision for you to, everyone to take on themselves, as they all are, but I'm not, I'm not particularly strong on that one. But seriously, proposals two and proposals three, there's a level of city service that we all enjoy here in Ferndale. We have remarkable city employees who do remarkable work every day. Just look at what's, what's happened in the parks and in the, in the efficiencies we've gained in technology and in City Hall. I couldn't be prouder to be associated with these folks who work here for the city. And I couldn't be prouder of the work this council has done to be good stewards of the money and the tax dollars from our residents. This is not a proposal that we put on the ballot lightly. We encourage debate and education, so by all means, come to the town hall on Wednesday. But please support proposal two and proposal three. The budget gets a little ugly if that doesn't go through, and those are decisions that, as a community, I don't think we just want to have to make. So, with that, I call, close to our council meeting tonight.
I was watching.
Yeah?
That was still a little heavy-handed.